Okay. Welcome, everyone, to the City of Angels City Council Meeting dated Monday, December 4th, 2017. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We met in closed session before the meeting, and pursuant to California Code Section 54957, public employment city administrator directions were given to the city administrator. Item two, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, directions were given to the city attorney. Okay, we have agenda in front of us. I'm looking for approval of the agenda. Is there anybody that would like to make any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have moved by Councilperson Olivera, second by Councilperson Herman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Pass is five oh. Okay, first staff updates, we have a consolidated report in our packet. Does anybody have any questions regarding the contents of the report?
I had a question on community development with Dave Hen.
Ms. Dave here. There he is.
Okay.
I was wanting to find out a little more about the certified prior laboratories' conditional use permit.
Sure.
I was wondering if they had restructured and redefined the permit from what it was before?
Right now, they have withdrew, they withdrew the original application, and they're going back and reworking the application based on the decisions that were made at the last meeting and continuing on there. So, at this point, the application's been withdrawn, so they would resubmit at a later date with a different, with a different style project.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because I know the original, you know, said it was to be a campus laboratory testing cannabis products, so I knew they have to change that. And also, if they do continue, or do you know, would they be considering having any, if they don't do cannabis, then would they still have, they wouldn't be having manufacturing, distribution, and all that?
That's, yeah, I mean, they could. I mean, it just wouldn't include those, that use. But until we see what that project looks like, I'm not going to speculate on what it would be.
Yeah, there were some things in the law, the new law, that was going to be a problem, too, because actually, you can't have the different structures of the commercial and distribution, so, and you can't have them on the same location.
Right.
So, there's a whole bunch of stuff that they would have to look at legally in order to pursue it. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment, but not for this.
I just want to say one thing before I left. I just wanted to tell the council, because I wasn't able, I just found out today that we were awarded our Sustainable Communities Grant for $171,000 for the design, the design and engineering for, or environmental for the sidewalk project north of State Route 4. So, from Capella to State Route 4, both sides of the street, we got that grant. We found out yesterday, so.
Congrats. Thank you.
Good.
Good news.
I just wanted to comment on two things. One, Jennifer retirement. So, that's sad to see her leaving.
Yes, she did. Yeah, she's been with us, I think, for, I don't know if Julie's out there, she's been with us for, like, 13 years, I think.
Pull your mic in.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Jennifer Tinnan is retiring in January. She's our utility billing accounts payable clerk or accountant one, and she's been with the city for about 13 years, I want to say. I hope I have that right. And she's going on to better things, so, and we will have an active ad out there next week. Art's out.
And then, just to PD, I'm glad to see that you were able to figure out what to do with Thor. I don't know where you're at, but, yeah, I tap up there. Yeah, I'm just happy to see that there was a solution for that.
The dog, canine.
The canine unit.
Keep the canine, keep the dog.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? All right, we'll move on to council updates. Councilperson Herman, do you have anything to report?
Well, I went to another meeting of the Transit Meeting Committee, which we're trying to do a joint powers agreement with, and we're trying to set up something, and it's conceptually still being developed, that would involve the county and the city. The city would end up having more input in transit, which in the past, it's kind of languished, and so now, we would be more part of the process for transit in the county and city.
Nothing to add from me.
No comment.
And, just that, a few of us participated in the parade, and I think that the turnout for the wine walk and parade in City of Angels was fabulous, and I've heard from a lot of the merchants and from ACBA that it was a great success, and it's nice to see that developing in our city and growing over the past few years.
Yeah, I too enjoyed the parade. It was nice having it in the evening when it was, when it was dark, and all the lights on the, on the vehicles and floats made a big difference. So, great turnout, a lot of fun.
It's fun.
Okay. Let's move on to our public comment portion of the meeting, and this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matters not on the agenda. The state law prohibits the city council from acting upon matters not listed on the agenda. So, is there anybody that'd like to make a comment?
You know, after reflecting on the, on the November 13th city council meeting, I really felt insulted. I felt insulted by comments by one of the city council members at the meeting when she stated people whom she feels compelled to represent were too fearful to speak for themselves. You know, the, the mention of pitchforks was not only insulting, but ridiculous. I'm also insulted by the council choosing to bring back at that time and ignore the marijuana issue and ignore the vote of your constituents by bringing forth another vote on marijuana. I want to remind you of the turnout for the 2016 presidential election, when we were also voting on marijuana. Nationally, 57% of the, of the registered voters voted in that election. For California, 75% of the registered voters voted, and in Angels Camp, 80% voted. That's an amazing turnout, 80% in Angels Camp. And 50% of the voters who did turn out voted no on marijuana. So, and, and the comment that someone felt, you know, that they weren't safe in the meeting, you know, voting is a protected right, and a registered voter can either choose to vote at the polls in the privacy of a voter's booth, or by absentee ballot, either way, with no intimidation whatsoever. I may not personally agree with how to vote, how a vote turns out, but I do respect that outcome. Yes, there was a large turnout at the November 13th meeting, because we felt compelled to turn out, to once again make it clear, we do not, and then, we didn't then, and we do not want now marijuana in our community. Can we make it more clear to you? I found the insulting comments were uncalled for and unprofessional. We voted, and I feel you have a larger responsibility to respect the outcome of our vote, and keep in mind, the people you feel more compelled to represent also had an opportunity to vote in that very same election. Yes, I'm insulted. Insulted you, you chose to ignore our vote, insulted with unprofessional, offhanded comments, and hope in the future, you will better consider what you say to your constituents and how they vote. Thank you.
Is there, is there anybody else that might make a public comment? Okay. At this time, based on the, that, is there someone else here? Something not on the agenda?
Uh, is it marijuana?
That's on the agenda, then, right. Okay. So, I'll go ahead and close the public comment for, it's hard for us to see, so please.
I'm right here.
Okay.
Hi, guys.
We're blinded by the lights.
Me, too. I just wanted to say thank you, guys, for being there Saturday night, those who attended. I really had a good time. You guys represent our community in a good face. The parade was a really good one, and I've been at home in bed sick all day, but I had to come back and say thank you. You guys have a very important decision to make, and I hope you have all your ducks in a row, and I hope they all float right up, not upside down. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, now, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. I would like to clarify one thing, if it feels necessary. The vote that the last speaker, the speaker just spoke about was very loud and clear, about how Angels Camp feels about cannabis. The reason we brought this forward yet again was to protect us from the laws that the state has, is passing. Had we not brought this forward again for a proper vote, and had we not instituted the urgency ordinance, our city, as of January 1st, would be at the mercy of the state. So, the very reason that we brought this forward again is to protect our city from the will of the state. So, that needs to be really, really clear. We're protecting the city from the will of the state. Okay. I think it's important, Derek, would you like to address that, please?
Sure. Do you, do you want me to do it now, or do you want to call the item and then have me explain it? I'm happy to do either way.
Let's call the item. We will, we will address that. It's a very important distinction that many of you seem to miss. Okay. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda items are expected to be routine. They will be placed, they will be acted upon by the council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or interested person may request that consent items be removed for discussion. There are four items this evening. The first is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November 13th. The second is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November 20th. The next is approval of the minutes of a regular meeting of November 21st. And finally, we're adopting resolution, to adopt Resolution 17-39, a resolution issuing notice of completion for the 2017 road improvement project. Is there anybody that would like to remove any of those items for discussion? Anyone in the council?
Nope.
Okay. I will entertain a motion.
Remove. Consent agenda as it is.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move to approve by Councilperson Olivera, seconded by Councilperson Herman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Pass is five oh.
Excuse me. Just want to point out that on the minutes for November 21st, Mayor Beehill and Council Member Matilde are abstaining, as they were not here. Just, oh, no.
Oh, good point.
They weren't here.
Okay. Okay, regular agenda. First item is a consideration of the extension of an urgency moratorium ordinance concerning the cultivation, commercials, and retail sale and delivery of marijuana and related land uses. Derek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is back before you, and to go back to some of the comments members of the public had, I think it's probably important to start with, why are we here? Why are we doing this? And as the mayor mentioned, we, we do need to be here tonight if we want to assert local control over the issue of cannabis land uses in this city. And by local control, I mean regulation, or, as was the vote at your last meeting, a ban, effectively, a ban on all types of, of commercial marijuana land uses. The reason why we have to take some affirmative steps and actually hold this hearing is because the way state law is written. State law can be interpreted to essentially usurp the right of local government to control the issue of cannabis land uses unless, i- if the local governments don't do anything. So, if the local governments remain silent on the subject, then effectively, they are, they are ceding to the state the right to make decisions about cannabis land uses within city limits. And that is a result of the way Proposition 64, which legalized marijuana by vote of the voters in November 2016, was written. I understand that in this city, a majority of residents voted against that initiative, but that initiative did become law, and the way the law is written is that if the state receives license applications and there are no local regulations in place, then the state can proceed to approve a use, even if the local governments don't want that, because they have remained silent by not enacting their own ordinances on the subject. And so, it is vital, if this city wants to assert control, one way or another, and I think at our last meeting, I talked about the regulation approach versus the ban approach. We, as a city, have the right to do either. At your last meeting, you chose the ban approach, and if the city wants to continue that approach, there is no way to continue doing that absent some action tonight. So, the bottom line is, and for the members of the public, I understand, you know, there appears to be a good size of, of members of the public tonight who likely do not want cannabis land uses in this city, and that's certainly their right, and we are required to take action if that is what you, as a council, ultimately want to see as well. In other words, if you want to implement that, those desires, as were very vociferously expressed at our last meeting, we have to take action tonight. If we don't take action, if we didn't hold this hearing, then the ordinance that you enacted at your last special meeting would expire, because it is only effective as an urgency ordinance for 45 days initially. So, I just want to make clear that there was no choice but for us to be here if ultimately the goal of this council is to, as was very vocally expressed, take a stance on banning marijuana land uses in this city. The procedural device we've used to enact this ordinance is an urgency ordinance. I walked the council through that at the last meeting, but basically, that urgency ordinance is effective for 45 days. And the idea is that that allows you to quickly get control over something. You have to immediately take action, so you put it on at your next meeting, you take the action, but the law requires you then to notice the public hearing, which we have done, by posting this in the newspaper, and then you have to extend for up to one year from the original date of adoption. So, the original ordinance was effective for 45 days, so what we are doing tonight is considering whether to extend that for an additional 10 days and 15 months, so that effectively, that ban that this council approved at your last meeting will remain into, in effect until November 12th, close of business 2018. So, that's why we're here, and what we're here to do, or what has been proposed, is to simply re-adopt the ordinance that you adopted at your last meeting, which bans marijuana dispensaries, bans manufacturing facilities, bans testing laboratories, and bans processing laboratories. So, it effectively bans all types of commercial land uses. The ordinance does allow personal deliveries, but that is from out of town. So, if a resident wants to have something delivered to their own home, then, you know, and it's created, manufactured, and processed somewhere else, they can have that. But effectively, this council has banned all types of marijuana land uses, and what we are proposing to do tonight is to extend that for up to November 12th, 2018. And then, if at that point, the council has not adopted a permanent ordinance, it can extend for an additional one year, up until November 12th, 2019. What I have done, just so I can be a provider of information to you, is describe some of the developments that have happened since we were last here. The first development is that the state has released its comprehensive urgency regulations, governing all of the different types of licenses that it will be issuing. I provided you the fact sheets. That happened, I believe, in late November. Our meeting was on November 13th. I mentioned that I provide that to you only because it is my obligation to accurately describe state law to you. Whether we like state law, whether we don't like state law, whether we feel federal law preempts state law, it is my obligation, as your city attorney, to accurately provide you information about what state law says. Obviously, you make the choice, but it is my obligation to provide you that information, and so I did. I provided you the fact sheets from the regulations. I have personally reviewed the regulations. I certainly can answer questions about them. It's probably a moot point if the council simply adopts the bans, because if you're banning, as you did at your last meeting, you're effectively saying, we don't want these uses in our city at this time, and so therefore, the regulations, knowing what's in the regulations, doesn't necessarily provide illuminating information. But obviously, it's my job to simply pass the information along to you, advise you on what the law is, and let you make the policy call. And along that same vein, on, I believe, Thursday, as I was submitting my staff report and the updated ordinance, I read in the Sacramento Bee, the comments of Attorney General Sessions, who has reiterated his opposition to states that legalize recreational marijuana. And he has again made comments that he believes his administration may take some action or take some stance about states' rights to, to enforce, or adopt, or have schemes like California has. Now, if you read the article, he doesn't really have any specific comments, and these are comments he made last spring. So, he hasn't really advanced his comments, other than to continue to note that the Trump administration may not recognize the right of states to have permissive schemes when it comes to recreational marijuana. There has not been any development, as I understand, of actual stances by the federal government, or any, any memoranda that are being issued by any of the Assistant U.S. Attorney Generals, or any of the deputy attorney generals that work in Washington. The current memo is the Cole memo, no relation to me, but that is basically saying, as long as, that deals with recreation, that deals with medical marijuana, and says, as long as cities and states are, are following the, the state laws, and as long as patients within those states have a valid need for their medical use, then the federal government will not take enforcement actions against them. The federal government has a right to decide which cases to choose, and which cases not to choose, and for a number of years, even though technically, it is a crime to possess even an ounce of marijuana, or even a plant, the federal government has never, at least not in recent years, taken any criminal actions against anyone who has such small amounts of marijuana, because obviously, they focus on the big time growers. And so, they've issued memoranda that have said, if you're legitimately a medical marijuana user or grower, we're not coming after you. Doesn't mean we agree with what you're doing, or that you're technically in compliance with federal law, but we, as a federal government, have limited resources, and so we will utilize those resources to focus on the big fish, so to speak. And so, that's the stance of the law at the federal level, but as I've said, the Trump administration, through Attorney General Sessions, has been making some comments that suggest the Trump administration may not, you know, may not follow suit with the liberalization that seemed to happen under the Obama administration. That said, there are some bills. Senator Booker from New Jersey has introduced a bill to legalize marijuana. There are some pushes by others to, to not recognize marijuana as a Class I drug. So, as, with everything going on in Washington today, things are in flux, and I don't think anyone knows what's happening at this point, or what will happen, and we can all guess, but at this point, the federal government will not be taking action right away, but there is some suggestion that the Trump administration may do something different than the previous administration. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just want to reiterate, all, all that is before this council tonight is to continue to do, for up to one full year, what you voted on at your last meeting. Nothing different has been proposed. The ordinance is the same. Nothing new has been inserted or changed. So, really, if the council takes action tonight to approve this ordinance, it will just be continuing the decision that it made at the last meeting.
Thank you, Derek. Any comments or questions from any of us here?
I don't know if this is important, but Derek said 15 months and 10 days. He meant 10 months and 15 days.
Yes.
Or, in this case, it's longer than that, because it's a year from the time it was originally?
Yes, one year. So, it was adopted on November 13th, and so, it would run until 11:59 PM and 59 seconds on November 12th, and then it would expire at that point.
Okay. And one other, one other comment. The reason we didn't wait the full 45 days was in anticipation of a larger crowd, we wanted to make sure we had this venue, and with the holidays and such, this was the only day that was really feasible to meet before the 45 days expired. So, here we are, addressing the same issue once again, and again, it is to protect us so we have local control of this issue, and we'll get run over by the state. Now, with that?
I just wanted to mention one thing, just to explain, but go ahead and finish if you're on that same topic.
I was going to open it up.
Okay. I just wanted to say that during that year, what we would do, what we're going to work towards is getting to a permanent ordinance. And once there's a permanent ordinance, and you know, that's in place, we don't have to, the urgency is sort of a temporary thing, so that's when we have to do the studying, and, you know, see if we want to tighten up some of the things on delivery, or on the six plants, or whatever else, and then we have to come to the point of having a permanent ordinance. Is that right, Derek?
That's correct, and, and so, I do want to outline the options. I mean, you don't have to wait until that one year. You know, we can get started right away on drafting a permanent ordinance, and there's nothing to take, stop us from taking this ordinance and turning it into a permanent ordinance. I will say, the process is a little different. This technically would be a zoning ordinance, so it would go first to your planning commission, and then it would come before you for ratification. The planning commission would be asked to make a recommendation, and then it would come to you for one meeting, and at that meeting, you would either accept the planning commission's recommendation, or you would adopt the ordinance as written. So, you know, we don't have to keep doing this, is what I'm saying. We, you know, you can give us direction if you'd like us to turn this into a permanent ordinance sooner rather than later.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so with that, we're going to go ahead and open up to, to public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes, and if you're asked to wrap it up, please politely wrap it up as soon as you can. I hope we have a little bit better behavior this time than we did last. There's really no sense getting, being obnoxious and, and pointing a bunch of fingers. Let's have intelligent discourse, and also, what would be helpful for me personally, we're considering in, in this process, timing is really the only thing left to talk too much about, and bring it back as a permanent ordinance sooner than later. If you have any thoughts about that, that might be helpful to, to provide. With that, we'll go ahead and open up for public comment.
My name is Jack Lynch, 600 Selkirk Ranch, Angels Camp. In Section 2 of the document, the so-called 480 ordinance, on page 4, Section 2, it describes the meanings of all those terms. In previous issues of this document, we've seen a description for delivery, and since we're talking about delivery, it's, it's a shame that we have not included delivery as one of the meanings in this new document. And I'd ask the, the council to please consider including that delivery. I have a document from an earlier write-up that shows delivery, meaning the transfer of marijuana from a commercial or retail marijuana dispensary, or a medical marijuana dispensary to any person, whether for medical or non-medical purposes. I think it's very important that that be included in this new document.
Thank you.
I have a copy of that.
Okay, if you'd just sat down there, Jack, we'll get, that's a, that's a good observation. Thank you.
Actually, may I comment on that?
Yes, please.
So, the reason that, that is, if you look at page 5, paragraph B, when I, on the permissive delivery ordinance, I sort of moved the definition into that paragraph B. What paragraph B says is, "The prohibitions in this section shall not apply to the delivery of marijuana from any licensed medical or non-medical dispensary located outside city limits, so long as the following conditions are met." And basically, what, what the- limits, so long as the following conditions are met." And basically, what, what the idea is that delivery is effectively defined in that language as having to come from a licensed medical or non-medical facility located outside city limits. And so, two essential conditions. One is that it comes from outside city limits, so not from within city limits, and two, that that facility be licensed. The word "delivery," I think, has a common English meaning, so it doesn't need to actually have a specific, you know, definition of delivery, because then also, the conditions 1 through 8 also talk about the transfer, and the, you know, cashless transfer, and other things. So I mean, I understand what former Mayor Lynch is saying, and I, I do agree that it is good to have definitions generally, but I, my goal was to accomplish that with that text there.
So, in other words, it was intentional to eliminate the definition of delivery, as we have seen in all prior documents.
That was an intentional drafting choice on my part.
Intentionally to eliminate-
Yes, to move it, to move it to there with that language.
Okay. When the previous ones, both of them were there. Delivery was defined, and it was also the same verbiage that we see in this document, so.
David White, Livock Drive, Angels Camp. I'm very pleased to hear everything that the city attorney has informed us of today. I suppose we are a suspicious lot. But it does leave me, and I think other people around me in the room at the moment, to ask, if we don't need to have a short-term extension, and if I understood what you said, it is possible to just go for a permanent ban, then why can't we, as a city, go for a permanent ban and be done with it?
We'll address, we'll address that later. Thank you.
I'll make a note of it.
Thank you.
Judy Axman, 255 Eldorado Court, in Angels Camp. First, I want to thank each one of you for serving the citizens of Angels Camp by being on this council. It is hard work and takes a lot of study on the issues. I must remind you, though, as many have said before, that you are to represent the community and not your own personal interest. Remember, the citizens spoke loud and clear last year when they voted to ban commercial marijuana, and it is your responsibility to honor and follow the oath of office that you took as a city council member. I sent an email to all of you through the City Hall some time ago, asking if you, or any member of your family, had any personal or financial gain in marijuana, commercial marijuana. I did hear from Linda Herman and Scott Beal that they did not have any interest, but I did not hear from the rest of you. I would like this to be on record, and would hope that the rest of you will be honest and forthright, and answer this tonight. The people deserve to know. Rumor has it that at least one of you does have a personal and financial interest in commercial marijuana. If so, this would definitely be a conflict of interest, and you should recuse yourself from this matter. Thank you.
Good evening. Craig Whitty, Mewoc Avenue, or Mewoc Way, Angels Camp, retired Highway Patrol Commander. I'd like to thank all of you for all your hard research that you've done on this. This is a tough topic. I've watched it through my years with the Highway Patrol in a lot of cities and a lot of counties. I've worked up and down the state. I appreciate that you've put it on hold and are doing more research. I hope that you continue to do that. If you hold it off for another year, we're seeing so much damage in Colorado, so much truancy, so many children that are ODing on these candies, these edibles, that it, it is a dangerous drug. I've seen it ruin lives. I've got a nephew in rehab that's ruined his life, starting with marijuana. I take this personally. I hope, the question that was just asked, that you filled out your statement of economic interest correctly, and that you did declare that you do have financial gain in that business venture. That's, that's something that you should do correctly, and it is something that we can request. So, please continue to research this. Please do the right thing, and please keep marijuana out of our city. Thank you.
I'm Penny Jassid. Live in Greenhorn Creek. And I was pretty much gonna say what Judy Axman just spoke about, and my question to the mayor and the council members is, if anyone was to ask the city for a copy of your signed Form 700, declaring whether you do have a financial gain with the marijuana subject, would there be any surprises on those forms? I don't know if you can answer that tonight or not.
We'll address all the questions at the end.
Okay. Thank you.
Right comments.
Why is that light in our face?
Good evening. Vicki Ranky, Angels Camp. I wanted just to clarify something, because I've been involved in reading all these laws for marijuana, and working at the county level, and I've heard this several times, the statement that was made tonight, that if we don't have anything in place, the state takes us over. And I just question that, because my understanding of the law, and I saw it tonight in the backup information that you provided, that the state will not issue a license unless you have a local license, or a local permit. In other words, if there's none, then they should be questioning it. That said, I understand the urgency ordinance, and that's perfectly fine if you wanted to do that. So, I just want to make sure that was clarified. Am I right about that? Can I ask that? That the state law right now says you, they will not issue a license without a local permit?
We'll, we'll address the questions at the end. Thank you.
And then the other thing is, of course, glad to see that you all decided that a ban ordinance was best for our, our city. And I agree that you should go for a permanent ordinance based on that. I do have one question, though, about the deliveries. I wasn't here at the last meeting, unfortunately, but I was wondering what Chief Fordall thinks about that, because it appears that he's gonna be very involved in trying to regulate that. So if you go to a permanent ordinance, I would like you to take that up and make a decision about whether that's even viable for us. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody else, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. Okay, let's address some of the questions that we heard. First is this, the Form 700 question. We all complete those forms. They are filed. I'm not sure, especially in a form like this, that it's necessary to answer those, their personal questions. There are different definitions as to what might be a conflict versus, you know, in law versus what we might think. So, I don't want to, you know, as I, I answered the email, and I made it real clear that it's not something that we had to do. But it's, it's, it's a voluntary thing. So if someone, you know, doesn't want to answer that question, we know, we all need to understand and respect that.
Mayor, excuse, excuse me, real quick. The Form 700s are available at City Hall, if you want to check them out. Everyone's filled them out, per the law. And you just have to fill out a public records request, and, and it is a public record, and you can come to City Hall and check them out, and see what they say.
Okay. And then, Mr. White asked about, why not going permanent right now? And I believe it's, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a simple process. We need to agenda it through the planning commission, and then once the planning commission approves it, they extend it to us for approval. So there is a process in place. So we can get that done in a matter of, what, a couple of months if we wanted to, but we can't do that tonight.
That's correct.
We're good? Okay. Clarifying, the state law require a local permit versus?
Sure. The problem that, the interpretive problem, and it gets very legal, and I don't want to put people to sleep, as I tend to do, but the issue is, is a term called permissive zoning. So our zoning ordinance will say, you, if you're in a business district, you can have a pharmacy, you can have a retail shopping establishment, you can have a grocery store. And, and the idea is that we're enumerating the uses that you can have within a zoning district, and some of them will say you have to have a permit. The way the Proposition 64 was written, it questions whether a city can rely on permit, permissive zoning. And so if somebody came to the city and said, "You know what? I want to put in a marijuana dispensary, a recreational marijuana dispensary," what, what we would say is, "Well, that's not authorized. That's not expressly mentioned as a, as a permissible use in our zoning." It has to say, "Retail marijuana dispensary." You can't just, you know, pigeonhole it into something else. But the law, the state law, the way Proposition 64 is written, is it basically appears to say, "We can't do that." And, and it's a very technical, it's, you know, it's statutory drafting, and the way phrases and words appear, and they're defined in one section and not in another section, and it gets complex. I wouldn't say that we, you know, we couldn't rely on it, but I, I would prefer a belt and suspenders approach, so that we take no, I mean, we want to make very clear what our position is. And so if we didn't formally enact some ordinance, the speaker who raised this issue is correct, the state would look to our ordinances, but they would see that we have nothing on point, and so they would deem that as an implied consent. So I'm getting very complicated. It's very complicated, it's boring, but the basic answer is that, if we don't do this, the state will interpret us to not have any regulations, and they will start issuing licenses. And then one day, when a, you know, a marijuana establishment opens up in a storefront, and they have their state license, we really wouldn't have any ability to go tell them, "You have to shut down." It's that simple. And, and it's, and it's just, the idea is, let's not take that risk, if it's the will of the council, to not have these uses at this time.
Derek, could I ask a question, just to clarify?
Yes.
Like, let's say the conditional use permit, you're saying, "If it doesn't mention cannabis in our code, then that could mean we allow it." Is that what you're saying?
Correct. That's basically, yes.
We'd have to go through all of our codes and add cannabis to everything?
Right.
Otherwise, the state says it's kind of okay?
Correct. Yeah, they'll interpret silence as-
Interesting.
-as implicit permission, as opposed to interpreting it as the lack of permission, which is the way zoning traditionally works.
Right.
They'll flip that on its head and interpret it the opposite, but that's, and that's because that's how the Proposition 64 was written.
Yes, interesting.
Okay, thank you. And then one other question I had here was asking how, how Chief Fordall felt about the delivery, deliveries aspect. And, and he can obviously speak for himself if he'd like to, but he was consulted on this, and he had a lot of input in what was written, and that's why it's, you have to go through an approval process to be a delivery person. You have to be checked out by the chief, and so they have to jump through a bunch of hoops in able, in order to lawfully deliver in our, in our city.
I would, I would add that it was the chief who reviewed a draft and made the suggestion to do the background check, and advised us on the type of background check that the triple I is what it's referred to in the field. So that, that was, he was consulted, and, you know, that was included, to make sure that PD would be able to, you know, assist in that aspect of regulation.
Okay. Okay, so I think we need to bring any more comments or questions before we call for a vote? I'll entertain a motion.
Ducking.
I'll entertain one.
I'll move to adopt the ordinance, urgency ordinance as is.
Okay, so we have-
Second.
Moved by Councilperson Olivera, second, by Vice Mayor Follendorf. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. All right. Item number two on the agenda is the approval of de-obligating funds for, de-obligating funds for congestion mitigation air quality, or CMAC Project 5206-014, for the pedestrian improvements to State Route 49 and Stealthy Park improvements, to Finnegan Court, for the allowance of reprogramming the CMAC funds to, into new projects. Dave Hanum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, wait, one more, please. Can you please hold the discussions until you exit the room? Thank you. Okay, sorry, Dave.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, tonight before you, we kind of, we, I've kind of been talking about this over the last couple of months, and, and that is, when we, when we got approved for projects back in 2015, the Angels Trail Project and the sidewalk gap, what we call the sidewalk gap fill project, from, from, basically from Roble Bank down to Bragg, and from South, from the intersection of 4 and 49 down to Stockton Street, we applied, those were, those were actually separate, all separate projects. We all combined them to be able to get the 1.8, 1.8 million, 1.1, 1.8 million. As, as the projects have been evolving over the last couple of years, we have been, we were fortunate to apply for an active transportation program grant for construction of the two sidewalk segments, the, for 1.97 million. The issue was, issue came was, of when that money was to be given to the city. And basically, this, based on the grant that, the act of transportation grant, we were to receive that money in the year 1920, to construct. The trail portion of the, of the project, we're calling the pedestrian path from Stealthy Park to 49, is gonna take a little longer due to the environmental concerns of the trail. I mean, it covers over the creek, we've got to deal with the creek, and some of the environmental concerns are a little, little more stringent in terms of when we start processing the environmental for that project. So what was mentioned was, we, we thought that we might be able to split the projects into two phases. One would be, the first phase would be the, the sidewalk gap projects, and then the second part would be the trail. But to do this, we would have to split the projects up. We couldn't do it like a Phase 1, Phase 2. We'd have to do two separate, two separate programs. So what we did was, we went to Caltrans, we asked them if we could do this, and what, what would be the process, or the cleanest process to do this with. They said that it was, it can be done, it's just we would have to de-obligate the proj, the project, and then reprogram the money. We wouldn't lose any of the money, we would just have to reprogram it into two separate new projects. And so tonight, what we're doing is, tonight what we're doing is that, is just giving a motion from the council to allow us to de-obligate those original funds, so that then we can then reprogram. We have all the paperwork ready to go. I just have to sign on some of the stuff, and get it sent back to Caltrans for the re, for the request for authorization for the two new projects. I broke out, in the staff report, I broke out in terms of fiscal analysis, of which, which project is, is which, in terms of the costs. I also included Drake Haglund's, and I apologize for the small print, but I also included the two, the two spreadsheets of the two projects. What Caltrans did allow us to do is, they allowed us to use Drake Haglund to do both projects, and not have to go back through the whole solicitation process of consultants and all that, since Drake Haglund was the original consultant as part of the project. So they will continue to be our consultant on these projects, which, which is a good thing, because they have been, they have been spending the money, doing the work, and getting all of this accomplished. So basically, what I'm looking for from the council tonight is just a motion, and to allow us to de-obligate the funds, for the purpose, for the purpose of reprogramming into two projects, to allow for the expediting of the, the gap sidewalk project for, to be used with the act of transportation program money. So it's just kind of a moving, moving a project forward. We still are looking for, we're still looking for construction money for the trail project. So that was another reason why that could take a little longer as well. So, so that's all I have. I know, if you have questions, I'll have to answer any of your questions. If not-
I got a question, Dave.
Sure.
So, the de-obligation and reaplication of these funds allows you to do this work in 17, 18?
Yeah, allows us to continue to do, yeah, because we're gonna expedite that, the sidewalk project. So we hope, the consultant informed us that they would have that work done, designing the environmental, which is very little for the sidewalks. Well, all we're gonna need is do, in sequoet terms- Well, all we're gonna need is do, in sequoia terms, uh, or categorical exemptions and categorical exclusions on the NEPA side. So it's a lot less, now that we've separated that environmental out from the, from the two, from the one big project, this environment will be a lot quicker, so we can move a lot faster with this project to be able to activate that, to be able to use the Act of Transportation money.
So you'd actually pour cement 1718? You wouldn't be studying it? You'd be pouring cement to get the jobs done?
Well, we, no, we wouldn't be pouring cement, it's about 1920.
Really? I was wondering.
Yeah, 19, 2020, yeah. So two years from now.
Yeah, it says in here the money has to be used in 2021. Does that mean by 2021, or?
Yeah, fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. As long as we've obligated the money, as long as we've obligated the money and it, and projects moving forward, we'll be able to use the money. That's the one point, that's the 1.97 million.
But we don't have to wait till 2020 to use it?
No, no, we're, we're hopefully, we're hopefully, uh, based on what I've talked to the consultant, I mean, they've already been working on the design and the environmental. Uh, in fact, we're working on getting a field, a field review date here in the next couple of weeks, uh, and so we're, we'll be moving forward, and hopefully, we'll be able to get that money a lot faster to move it forward. But that's just kind of our timeline of what we need to get.
So we have the construction money for the sidewalks, but we don't have for the pedestrian trail, is that correct?
Right.
So we actually get to construct the sidewalks?
Yeah.
Okay, and not the trail yet?
Yeah. Well, the trail's probably gonna take a little longer to process, just the environmental on the trail's gonna be a whole lot, whole lot more complicated in terms of, you know, streamlined alterations and dealing with the creek and, and all that, so and mitigation measures and all that type of stuff. So it's gonna be a little more difficult, it's gonna take us a little longer to get that done.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Any, any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dais and entertain a motion.
I'll move.
The tie. Moved by Councilperson Matilde, second by Vice Mayor Follendorf. All in favor of the recommendation to deobligate the CMAC funds from one project and reprogramming it into the other two? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, let's move on to calendar.
Okay, first let me say that there is no meeting tomorrow, which is when we regularly schedule our council meetings, because we needed to have this venue tonight. But on Wednesday, the 6th, there is a COG meeting. On the 7th, there's a special council meeting where we will be addressing the city attorney issues, interviews. December 12th, Tuesday, December 12th, is the November-December combined UWPA meeting. Okay? Planning Commission meets on the 14th. LAFCO on the 18th has been canceled, and will meet at the Firehouse for City Council on the 19th.
Okay.
So the, the 7th, that's pretty firmed up with all parties concerned? Great.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
The interviews on the 7th, is this a-
Yeah, but I, I knew they were-